Please stand. I'd like to welcome everyone and also welcome our Zoom participants. Dr. Lester Stewart.
Glad to have you with us today. Sing with me.
Oh, singing sweet by the altar with fire. A surrounding clear air and the twilight skies gleaming. There's rosettes and bright stars through the bale of the sky. Oh, the ramparts we watch were so gallantly streaming. And the rock is great there, but the birds be here. In the blue of the night, there are landlubbers here. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
I pray to be taken to the flag in the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Jerry Atkinson has our. As our invocation.
Would you pray with me? We beseech you, our heavenly Father, to bestow your grace upon this meeting as we enjoy our fellowship with one another. May we grow in statues so that we may be able to give more to our friends in Rotary. And in turn, give strength to the ideals of Rotary in our service to mankind. As we put service before sin. And now we ask your blessings on this food that we are enjoying. And for the opportunities that lay ahead.
Amen. Jerry Duffy, family of Roter.
Thank President Gregg. Good morning, everybody. Hope you're having a great Monday so far. So looking at the list today. Birthdays, Star Sessions on October the seventeenth. And then we got three members, Baron twenty first of October. Keith, Mount Canaldi, and Susan. Demetrius Buggin and Jane on the twenty first as well. And on the October twenty third, Jason Jackson and Darwin. Hope you all have a fantastic day and a fantastic week. Thank you.
Mr. Dennis Coe, introduction of guests, visiting Rotarians.
Hello, we're happy to welcome our guests and visiting Rotarians today. Right now, we only have one listed, so we have Randy Sellers, guest of Troy Mountain. Do we have any other visitors we may have missed?
Oh, I got my grandson today. John Mitchell Wong.
John Mitchell?
Wong.
Okay, let's give these folks a round of applause.
Camp Ask a drawing, Astron Mayler. One thousand and eighty points. Okay, last four digits, seven, two, nine, three. Seven, two, nine, three.
Are you sure?
I am.
Oh, Jerry.
Jack of clubs. Better girl than I thought. Blake Dogtree and Kelly Fine here, you would please stand. I just want to commend these guys. They just knocked the purple pinky donuts out of the park. And it was just handled beautifully and wonderfully. We wound up, the money that was collected from our club, turned into a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars going portfolio rep.
Sandra Bay, one day. Blake did all the work, though.
Captain Mayler, he sent her to, she was a lot of them.
Wonderful. All right, if Robert Ferguson would come forward with his new member.
I'll bring to you Christopher King. And you won't make him nervous calling Christopher. Everybody calls him Chris. Chris born and raised in Marianna. Attended to mobile and Troy University. Outkast discovered like most of us, his wife Stephanie. Has two children, Carolyn and Chandler. He has spent a lot of time with the Baptist College of Florida. In the last two years, as staff count on me. I'm with Chris King.
Charles, but forward with your.
Good afternoon. It is a, it's a great day to get a new member. It's even better to get two new members. It's fantastic. Brad Parrish is a Dope and native and a graduate of Northview High School. He and I were coopers together. He was one year behind me. We may or may not have hung out at Willdale. I don't remember. We might have. He is the son of Ronnie and Linda Parrish, lifetime Dope residence. And Brad earned a bachelor of science degree from Birmingham Southern College. And MBA from the University of Dallas. He's been gone for about thirty years, but he had Monica Coleman. He came back in August of last year. Brad has worked in higher education his entire career. He served in student recruitment, student services, and fundraising roles for small private colleges and universities, fifteen years, before working in education technology the last ten years. Brad is employed with Honor Education as Vice President for Business Development. Brad and his wife Heather have two lovely daughters that attend the Houston Academy. Presley is a junior, and she is, she's on the dance team.
Yeah.
On the dance team, and Paxton is an A three. As they have, as a family, they go to First United Methodist Church. And they enjoy going to the beach, HA Athletic Events, and taking cruises for vacation. I give you Brad Parrish.
If you got, thanks me. Fellow Rotarians, it is our privilege and duty to add new members from time to time so that we may not only increase our usefulness and influence of the club, but also to extend the spirit of Rotary throughout the community. Today, I welcome to our ranks and admit the membership, Chris King and Brad Parrish. You've been elected to membership in this club because your fellow members believe in you. Believe you're a worthy representative of your calling and also possess qualities that will permit you to exemplify the true spirit of Rotary in your public, business, social, and private life. As president of the club, I wish to impress upon you that you've been admitted not only to the Dope and Rotary Club, but to a worldwide association. Can attend a Rotary Club anywhere in the world. And by virtue of your membership in this club, you'll be welcomed into the fellowship of any Rotary Club in the world. Honored and privileged, Rotary membership carried with it duties and obligations. You will be expected to attend the club's meetings regularly, form your share of club service, and place your knowledge and talents at the disposal of the club and task of carrying the principles of Rotary into the daily life of the community. On behalf of the entire membership of the Dope and Rotary Club, I now formally accept you to membership. And would ask your sponsors to give you your badge and your pen. It's the four-way test in the pen. Your badges are not too quiet yet. Fellow Rotarians, I propose a standing ovation. All right, County Commissioner Doug Seinfeld has an announcement for us today.
All right, thank you, Greg. Thank you this evening. Y'all don't get upset, then Commissioner Shute, we're not campaigning no more. He's coming in, I'm going out. But anyways, I just want to come again. We always speak as our Dope and Rotary bar. Our Houston County Farm City Program that we have initiated years and years ago. And so that time's coming up again, that week of November the eighteenth through the twenty fourth. Our theme for this year is sustaining for the future. And that's agriculture. That's food, sustaining the future. So we go a lot of places all over the county, farm, food, landmark tours, visit civic clubs, promoting our Farm City Program. Then we have a Farm City Swap where an elected official goes to the farm. And then one of the elected officials also will have the opportunity to see how farm operation works on that farm they go to. And then that farmer has the opportunity to come to the city and see what's going on in county or city government. So we appreciate Dope and City working with us because that's what it's all about, Farm City relationship. So over the years, we've had numerous awards, one in the state in 2021. Farm City of Houston County Farm City was first place in Division One. Best Civic Club Program. Best Media Proclamation. Twenty twenty one, we had the first place video contest. We had the Best Civic Award, Best Media Coverage, Best Proclamation, and our state volunteer of the year was Ms. Jackie Culpepper, who is our county assistant administrator. So we congratulate Jackie on that award. Overall, we have two state volunteers of the year, two state awards, and over twenty poster awards in the last few years that we've been actively involved in Farm City Program. Our Houston County, actually, you've got peanuts on your table, so enjoy those. And enjoy, they're presented by the Alabama Peanut Producer Association. But Houston County is actually the second, but they say second, I think it's the first peanut producer in the state. And the second in the nation, Georgia being the first peanut producer. Folks, agriculture today is so important. You realize it's changed. The transitions change, the technology's changed. A lot of new inventions have been created to help the farmers cut costs and cut expenses. But inflation hasn't helped a lot, and so we all dealing with that. But it's a seventy billion dollar industry in the state of Alabama. And there's almost three hundred thousand employees that work in that industry. Now, timber is one of our biggest resources that we have in the state of Alabama. As we know, Smart Lam and Dope and build cross laminated timber. And it's a ninety-two million dollar facility of the largest in North America. They're co-partnering with us here in Dope and Houston County. The other one is Hudson Alpha Institute. For viral technology teams with donation on viral grass bio-tech institute for the purpose of advancing education, ag research, economic development. Hudson Alpha has a program that they're designing and creating what they call a genome research on peanuts. Creating new varieties. No new varieties can even be drought resistant. That won't, that'd be great. I mean, that'd cut out some of the irrigation or speeding on the weather. So actually, we'll have one of those representatives. Hudson Alpha will be speaking at our Farm City banquet, which is hosted by the city of Dope. So we applaud these two strong corporations partnering here in Houston County and Dope. So Houston County Ag, Bar Street, and related industries. The total impact here just in our county that we've tried to figure the numbers is almost a seven point eight billion dollar in economic impact. And employees in the general area of agriculture and surrounding other occupations that people have that's related to agriculture, sixty-seven thousand employees. That's amazing for our county. So that's how important agriculture is. So our top industry groups today, agriculture, forestry, poultry, cattle, healthcare, and social services. So as you can see, ladies and gentlemen, agriculture has a strong presence here in our Houston County. So keep that theme in mind, sustaining for the future. And one of the best things that we can think is just like what we've had today at lunch. Food. Farmers produce food, and that's what we have to have to be a law. Thank you so much. Lots of good state food is going on.
Chris Buda will introduce our speaker of the day.
Good afternoon. No hurricanes, no wildfires, and no freezing weather. Even though Alabama, great place to be. It's my pleasure, Mr. Shute. I think most everybody knows Brandon Shute. I've asked him to come and speak this morning as our incoming county chairman. Mr. Shute has been a District Four County Commissioner since two thousand twenty fourteen. He's served on several committees and done a lot for us. I can for sure tell you that he looks at our tax dollars and our budgets very thoroughly. Knows every dime that we spend and asks the right questions. And he works very hard. Twenty eighteen, the governor appointed him as a representative to the second congressional district where the Alabama Cyber Technology and Engineering School. He served that well, and I believe he served as treasurer for that organization's. So he, he and his wife go to covenant United Methodist Church. Is a member of the Tuesday Rotary Club. And he's going to talk a little bit about what he's going to do over the next few years to help our county. So I introduce Mr. Bransh.
I'll begin by saying that Chris Buda does an outstanding job. Sorry, you may correct it, certainly not before the work. Lot more closely over the next few years. So thank you. Greetings from the Tuesday Rotary Club, the Do Nothing Club is what Johnny Corley likes to call us. And I really wish he was here today. I really wish he was here today because the only place I see him these days is at liquor stores. Not to talk about some of the challenges that we're going to face as a county. And certainly, I don't mean that in a negative context. I'm not criticizing anybody. But every organization has challenges, and Houston County will certainly have challenges as well. It will have to work through the next few years. But first, I want to tell you a story. I think it was the nineteen sixty-eight Olympics, which was eleven years before. It's heard of, it's heard of recently. There was a runner in the marathon competition. And he was from Tanzania. And so he won, he was, got, got permission or whatever to go. So he was qualified to go, so he's running in the marathon. And he injures himself, I think fairly early on. Falls and hurts his knee, so he's not going to win. In fact, he was not the only one that injured himself that day. There were seventeen other people running in that contest that injured themselves and withdrew themselves from that competition. This gentleman from Tanzania kept running, even though he had no chance of winning. In fact, he was about an hour behind the winners. So the winners cross the finish line, they do the medal ceremony. The people, the stadium, just about is empty, and this guy's still running. And so about an hour later, after everybody's gone home, a guy from Tanzania comes in, enters the stadium, I think they have run one final lap. Runs one final lap, crossed the finish line. So obviously, people ask him, it's like, why did you feel it was important to finish this race? And he said something that I thought was interesting. He said, "My country did not send me to the Olympics to start the race. They sent me to the Olympics to finish the race." And that's something I want to keep in mind as we enter this next quadricium and the new commission takes over. You know, first of all, I greatly appreciate all this support that I've got this past election cycle. I'm not delusional in that I think that everybody voted for me because I know that there's some people that support Mr. Seinfeld who has been an honor for me to serve him. But I'm going to tell, want to instill this in into the new commission. People didn't vote for us to be a commission. They didn't vote for me to be a chair. They voted for us to do the job, so we're going to do that. So I look forward to serving. I'm very thankful to have this opportunity. I do want to touch one thing, as Chris said, providing the evidence up here. People ask me quite often, I hear, you know, you hear conversations that take place without you. People always ask, what, what do you do for a living? So I want to talk about that very briefly, although people are still curious. I had an internet marketing and website developer company. I sold that, I believe, in twenty fifteen. To a good friend of mine, Mike Riddle, Push Frank Press. He has done an outstanding job absorbing that into his company and really used that as a catapult, and maybe wrong quite a bit. They've got clients in for Colorado. They do an outstanding job, so if you need websites, go call me, call Mike Riddle, Push Frank Press. It's a good job for you. But right now, I'm sorry, twenty, let's see, after I sold my business in twenty fifteen, I developed some software on a contract basis. Also developed some software that I actually used during this past election to help voter targeting. Twenty eighteen, I bought an e-commerce company. It was in a long-term decline. I doubled the sales and that company sold it in January of this year. So I no longer do e-commerce. I do have some business partners. We have a couple of what we call content sites. So it's nothing that you've ever heard of, but if you do a Google search for how to take care of, you know, best fertilizer for centipede grass, you may land on our website. And then we have a guy that is very intelligent, that's one thing. And you may read the article, you may click, and if you click and buy something, we get paid a commission. So that's kind of how that works. So I've been doing that full-time other than my commission stuff since January. And it's a lot of fun, but that game is very difficult, too. It's very risky. Ability to make money is dependent upon what the engineers in Silicon Valley. I think the searches and how to think searches work. You certainly don't want to have us to get in proportion of your net worth tied up in very risky assets. So we'll probably exit those in two to three years, then we'll buy something a little bit more close to home. So, but that's, that's what I do. So now, now everybody does. But I do want to talk about the challenges that the county faces. Obviously, Mr. Seinfeld touched on a big one, and that is inflation. You know, the feds say that inflation is increasing about eight, nine percent a year. I don't personally believe that. I think it's much higher than that. And I know that our inflation, because we deal, we deal with heavy equipment, we deal with machinery, we deal with construction materials, and for those of you that are in the construction business, you know that inflation is much higher. Your inflation is much higher than eight percent, nine percent. It certainly hares them, hares them as well. But under property taxes, we can't raise property taxes without other people. There's no movement to do that, so don't worry about your property taxes. I'm sure you'll get your bill, if you're not already. It's higher than last year. And next year, I'm told to the, I've told the assessors, it'll probably be much higher the following year. That's not us raising your property taxes. That's just the value of property going up. And so we ask, where's that extra hundred dollars? I said to the county commission, where's it going? I said, I can tell you, it's probably being eaten up in inflation. So that is certainly going to be a challenge. One of the biggest things that, not sexy, you're probably not going to hear anything about it, but it deals with county buildings. We've got a tremendous need for different space, for more space in certain departments with our, with county government. Public judgment has been needing additional space for a number of years. I think we've got a solution there. There's someone needing certain, boy, they had to deal with it pretty soon. So that's going to put some space, people want to absorb that, so I think we're good there. Our maintenance department needs some space. Again, not sexy, but Sean Curris, who's our, who's over our maintenance department, does an outstanding job. So, you know, they've got to have some more space. EMA needs stores for homeland security. We're selling the farm center. I'm sure some of you probably heard that. So the farm center has never really been set up as a great storage facility. So we're selling it anyway, so we're going to have to build a new building for EMA. And thankfully, the city is just going to partner with us on that project, so that's going to be good. That's going to save both of us, I think, some money. VA, we've got a long-term plan for that. Again, not sexy, but the VA, we are required to provide them space. So long-term, they're going to be at Old Moody Hospital, which is redeveloped. In the intermediate term, we may have to put them somewhere else temporarily. Extension office, we're required to provide them space. And they're at the farm center as well, so we're going to have to move them somewhere as well as the water authority. Now, we're not required to provide the water authority space, as far as I know. We're still making sure that's correct, but that's my belief as of right now. We're not actually required to provide them space. We probably will partner with them on something soon. Water testing lab, that's a department of the county. All of, a lot of municipal governments have to take their water, it's got to be tested. They come to our testing lab, have that water tested, we have to provide them space. I'm hoping we can keep them with the water authority, but that's not necessarily a hundred percent going to happen. We'll see. I've gotten a lot of questions about the farm center, so I do want to talk about that. The farm center is completely depreciated. If you've ever toured the facility, you know that, especially the whole farm center structure. I mean, we use that for stores, the share has a lot of equipment in there, but it's not an ideal space. It never has been. And at some point, we needed to either invest millions and millions of dollars in the farm to get enough stuff and to get it in a position to where we can use the space over the long term. Or we needed to sell the farm. And to invest millions and millions of dollars would probably mean we would be tearing down the farm center structure building to be able to do what we needed to do. And, you know, you might make an argument that would probably be the best thing to do from a financial standpoint. But, you know, when you're, when you have a legislative body like the county commission, sometimes it's what you can get the votes to do. And so we can't get the votes to sell. Probably would not have even gotten the votes to tear down the historic structure and put millions and billions of dollars into something that I, I think over the long term, as the city acquires that space and redevelopment, redevelops it. I think it will one day be a jewel, whereas right now, it's kind of more of a nice forum. So I'm excited about the farm center changing hands. I think the city certainly has some resources, the county doesn't have to redevelop that property. So I'm very excited about that, but it does present challenges. And that challenge is predominantly going to be space. We do have some property that we probably will sell. Some property that is excess property, some property that we're using, but it's not going to be set up for, ideally for the use that we currently use it for. So we'll probably sell some property. The jail is a medium-term, Sheriff has said for years, we need to expand the jail. That's probably something that we're going to have to tackle at some point. I think, last time I talked to Major Rafferty, it may have been sixteen billion dollars. You're looking at about fifty billion dollar in your budget, and that's a big, big chunk. So not anything we can tackle right now, so that is something that we, we know about. We hope to be able to do something someday, but that is going to be a big challenge. We are required to provide the county school board space for their offices. A lot of people don't know that. So county, county school board, we have to provide their office space. The building they're in is incredibly old. They have outgrown it. And in my younger naive days, you know, it's like a lot of people, "I'm hiring increasing our central office staff." Well, a lot of times, it's not. are me increasing our central office staff. Well, a lot of times, it's not the local school people that say, we need to increase our central office staff. It's the federal government saying, if you want this money, you're gonna do this program, you're gonna do that program. To do that program, you need, you need central office staff. So that, your office is really pushed down by the federal government. So they need more space, they need new space, and that's something that probably we're gonna have to buy one day and and do something. Uh I want to talk about personnel. I'm sure everybody in here that is an employer, and even if you if you're not tired, you still work, know how big of a challenge it is to get employees. And we have kind of gotten ourselves in a position that we don't necessarily want a good employee, we just want a poor body. And that's not a position I I think that you want to be in, but that's kind of the positions that we've been forced into. Uh I I I do, as chairman, want to try to improve the county uh workforce, try to improve the culture of the county. Um I don't want to, now now I've communicated this to personnel director, I don't want to just hire the first person that walks in and applies. Uh a lot of times, what they do is they apply, we, as quickly as we can, we get them in. Uh we go through all the hoops, all HR hoops you have to jump through, and uh we try to get them an interview and we try to hire them just as fast as we can before they look elsewhere and say, I'd like to get a job over here at so-and-so. I can go over here and get a job. So we try to beat them, uh try to get them hired before they before they look elsewhere. Uh what I want to do is I want a prospective employee to come in and I want our personnel department to sit down with them and go over, of course, all the great things, why they, all the great things about working for the county. Why they should want to work for the county. You have all these state holidays, which in my opinion are too many, but it is what it is. You have all these state holidays off. You have off every Friday. Most of the county works four days a week. They work ten-hour days, but you have off every Friday. Um and so let's go over the positive things. You get a, you get a pension. Like, where can you go these days and get a pension? Really not a whole lot of options. Uh but on the other hand, I want us to be honest. Here's why you might not want to work for the county. If you are going, if you think you're gonna be rich one day, you probably don't want to work for the county. Because we cannot pay as much as private. You are not gonna get rich working for Houston County's government. Um you do have to work ten-hour days. That's not necessarily for everybody. Some people want that shorter day, would rather spread that across uh across five-day work. I want to be upfront and honest with people. And I want to tell them, once you take this information, I want you to go home and I want you to think about it. And if you still want to work for, if you're still interested in this job, if you apply for, call me back tomorrow, the next day, we'll schedule it. I want to give people that help really want to work for the county an easy way to get out of that job. I don't want us wasting our time interviewing people on the workforce. And I certainly don't want to hire somebody that's gonna stay there for about three weeks, three months, until we get another job for it. So uh that's the plan. You'll probably see something coming out of the social medias uh in January. We're gonna do some promotion, uh some promotional uh videos uh and other material for not the county government, but for our employees. Like, did you know that we have a sheriff that works for Houston County that on his weekends, Fridays off, whenever he's off, he's a cake baker? I'm not gonna tell you who that is, but he makes cakes. We have other employees that work in the probate judge's office. I think one of them has a florist, has a florist's business. So there's a lot of people that work for the county, that they're county employees, they have other benefits. They they are in the pension system. But they have side hustles, they have other businesses that they do on their numerous holidays and many days off. And so it's a benefit, it's a great thing, and people love it. So I want to promote our employees and what it means to those people to have a job in Houston County. So that one day, the people out there seeing this information, they may not need a job now, but one day they will. Maybe they'll want to make a change and they'll think, you know what, I think that Houston County would be a great place to work. They seem to have a lot of good people that work in Houston County. We've really got to increase the number of applicants we get for some of our jobs. Used to, uh probate judge's office, we'd have a job opening and there would be over a hundred applicants for that one job. And this is years ago. Today, we might get a dozen and most of those are not even qualified. They don't meet the minimum qualifications. And so that shows up when you go to pay your tag, pay your tag or pay your taxes. You may not get the service that we, that I, the probate judge, I think, let me talk about probate judge. He he does an outstanding job. I'm sure most people here know him. He designed that system by himself. It's it's improved greatly over over the years he's been in office. He does an outstanding job. I do look forward to working with him as well. So I am not, what I'm not looking to, looking forward to doing is adding to employee headcount. You control your headcount, you can control your budget. Half of our budget is eaten up by salaries. Now, you look at your own business, you might think, oh, that's rather high. We are in a service business. We are a uh subdivision of the state that provides services to our local population. Um and as a certain, and as a heavily service-oriented business, service-oriented organization, it requires a lot of people. And so um anyway, I'm not looking to add headcount. I'm actually looking to cut people for attrition. So we'll see how that goes. Uh one of the things I campaigned on is making Houston County a cooler place to live. So in this day and age, when you can literally work for whoever you want to, but live wherever you want to, those, that conversation of where I want to work is not necessarily tied to where I want to live. Those are increasingly two different conversations. So we have to, and you may have heard me talk about this, we have to increase the number of reasons that people want to live in Houston County. Uh and that is gonna require some investment. Um now I'm giving you an update on one of the things I talked about last time when I was here, and that is the bike trail. That is a, as I said last time, that is going to be a multi-year project. We have just now gotten back the initial appraiser, uh appraisal for the bike trail project. I think we've been at this for about a year and a half. And because of ALDOT's regulations, that appraisal has has to go through a review process. So, you know, never, I don't know, it's just a lot of red tape in government. But anyway, so we're gonna get through that process. But I'm hoping that we can start acquiring property uh for that next year and we'll be able to put that together. Now, that's not a slammed up, that's not a done deal, because there's about six property owners. They've all expressed interest. Not come to an agreement. They don't even know how much their property is praised for. So we'll communicate that then real soon and hopefully we'll start making acquisitions next year. So be able to, be able to look out for that. Uh Houston, I like to say that Houston County by itself is not really a force in and of itself. We're more of that force multiple. So if you're familiar with military terms, like, we can't uh, you know, we're not gonna go in there and and do a lot on our own. But we can really help out our municipal governments and help their people. Uh one of the things uh that we recently voted on is uh giving a million dollars of our 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 money to the city of, uh city of Dope for green space, green space downtown. I believe that that is going to be a tremendous asset, not only for the city of Dope, but also for Houston County. You remember the days when Foster Fest was big and it was going, there was people coming from Georgia, and I I remember talking to them. I would randomly ask people, hey, where are you from? Georgia, Panhandle, Florida. They would come from all around to go to Foster Fest. And I don't know if Foster Fest, as we know, it doesn't really come back. But that doesn't mean that they, that we can't have other events. Uh in that green space, there's gonna be a little amphitheater, and so that's gonna provide opportunities for musicians, for shows. I really think, especially the young people, especially the people that, the mobile young people that can live, like I said, live anywhere, work for anyone. I think that's gonna be a great asset, great asset for those folks. So uh and I'm excited about that. Uh the last thing I want to talk about is we do need to do a better job of cleaning up this camp. Uh now, we've made some changes recently with our sanitation uh department. Uh the policy should be coming out soon. Where if you live in the county, historically, if you have a pile of trash, and I'll just leave that, call it what it is, a pile of trash, you set it out by the road, mattress and box springs, toilet, toilet seats. It sits out there way too long, way too long. And so you think about this, you're going to look at a house, or you're you're trying to recruit some of the people in the county. They're driving around, let's see what this county, let's see what this city, whatever, let's see what this place is about. Driving around, seeing the signs. They drive by, literally a commode sitting beside you. They drive by a a pile of box springs that looks like it's been there for over a year. That's a problem. That has historically been a major problem. Uh it is one of the chief things that I get complaints about. What happens is people throw that out there and nobody claims responsibility. Nobody claims responsibility. And so we go, business property owners, like, is this your toilet? Is this your box spring? No, that's not mine. I don't know how that goes. And then and maybe they're telling the truth. I think a lot of times, a lot of cases, they are telling the truth, but sometimes not. Uh so we we have increased the sanitation fees by five dollars, which we needed to do anyway. Uh as you know, fuel um is eating our lunch. Our garbage trucks, Chairman Goldbergh mentioned this in the meeting, they cost two hundred thousand dollars more than they did just two years ago. I'm not saying the garbage trucks cost two hundred thousand dollars. I'm saying the garbage trucks cost two hundred thousand dollars more than they did two years ago. So we had to do something. And anytime you you add on fees, it's nice to be able to add an additional service. So one thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna run a route two to three times a month. Uh there's the knuckle boom trucks that'll run a route, and if they see that stuff, instead of under the whole process, we try to identify who owns it. Visit the property owner, tell them it's gonna cost you fifty dollars to pick up that pile of trash. Hopefully, they pay it. If they don't pay it, we send some equipment out there and push it off the right away. And it's still an eyesore, it's still ugly. We're just gonna pick it up within reason. Obviously, if it's a huge pile of trash, it's contractor debris, we're not gonna do that. Actually, contractors, we will pick it up. They'll be a punitive fee for that. And so it'll be cheaper for you to hire a contractor to pay your contractor to haul that stuff off, and we'll give us. But we've got to clean up this camp. Another thing is the litter. Uh we have people coming up from Florida, we have people coming in from Georgia. Again, they're looking at this place, so I'm gonna live in Dope and do, I'm gonna live in Houston County. If they see trash beside the highway, I think that speaks ill of us. We've got to do a better job of that. Uh I've I've been talking to uh Tony Weber at Community Corrections. We're doing a plan to get uh some of these community corrections people back out there picking up trash. Um I'm working on some other plans. I don't want to disclose that yet because I still have to get our attorney to make sure they're they're actually legal. Um but um trash is a, our sanitation fee is an enterprise fund, so we can't, for instance, if you pay us twenty dollars a month to pick up the trash, we can't take five dollars of that and use it to pay a rent. That that is illegal. So there are certain things we can spend money on, certain things we can't. So I gotta make sure that what I'm thinking we can actually legally do. I think we can, but again, that's gonna be so hopefully I'll have some announcements about that. So anyway, that's kind of the long and short of it. Again, probably not the sexiest or most interesting conversation you'll uh that you'll have uh uh in the next few months, but that's what we're gonna be working on. It's not necessarily sexy running a county government, but I'm excited to have this opportunity. And I thank you for the opportunity. Very passionate about this and looking forward to doing my best to do a good job for you and for a few future generations of our citizens. So with that being said, are there any questions? Yes, sir.
What's the intended location for the bike trail?
Uh the intended location is gonna go from, I'll say roughly, Acom, it's not exactly Acom, roughly Acom, Cowards Town Hall. Uh it is, it is my goal, and hopefully it'll, again, I don't think this project will be completed in about ten years. I think it's gonna be that long. But hopefully, we'll have a countywide trail system one day. This is, this is phase one of what I hope will be a downtown Dope and City of Ashford, downtown Ashford trail. Uh you can get from uh downtown Dope to the medical center right now. We've still gotta get from the medical center to Acom. I think we're ninety-five percent of the way there. We just gotta get across the circle. And once we do that, we're really almost, gonna be almost our trail that will then get you to to Cowards Town Hall. So one day, one day, again, I may not be around to see it, but one day, I'm hoping you can get on a bike in Wixburg, Alabama, pedal through downtown Dope and stop off at whatever KBC is at this future date. Have a drink, whatever, get refreshed, go on to Ashford, have lunch, and come all the way back to Wixburg in a day. Um some of the fastest-growing rural communities have invested in trails and they have worked it out. You may not be a biker, you may not be a walker, you may not be a exercise person, but I promise you, promise you, younger people love this sort of thing, and those are the people that we have to compete. But thank you for the question. Anything else? Yes, sir.
Uh yeah. Then you're planning plans to move the vehicles to electric vehicles, uh for the coast of gasoline and air tanks?
I think as the costs come down, that will probably be a question that we'll have to ask ourselves. Um I think right now, I I don't necessarily think it makes a lot of sense. Uh I've seen where some of these folks, they they buy like a Tesla or some other vehicle. The batteries in these things degrade over time. There's less moving parts, there's less moving pieces, but they do degrade. And at some point, that battery is depleted. You gotta buy a new battery, and that battery costs as much as the car. And so, I don't know, I I don't think we're gonna do that anytime soon. But I I do want to look at uh some alternative energy products, if that makes sense. Because I know the feds, if you, if a county or city government does projects, say we, let's just say we install solar panels. Uh the sheriff's here, I just say solar panels at the county jail. Uh the feds will actually write you a check, I think, for thirty percent of that product or for that project. So that may be something that we want to look into at some point in time. But but we'll see. Yes?
You mentioned the trail. What are the plans to get across the All Star Circle at the medical center? And then, I know we're putting up, uh on the other side of the All Star Circle going out eighty-four west. Are there any plans to safely get people across there, other than trying to dodge traffic?
Uh dodging traffic is not, is not an option. So we've gotta go over or under the road. I know the racer-back greenway, they tend to go under the road. So they'll have a large culvert. And as part of that, they will have a bike trail in that culvert. And I think it's fifty-two, how about fifty-two east is probably the to me that makes the most sense to kind of get across the circle. I don't know. I don't know. We're, you know, we're still focused on phase one. I have these thoughts about future phases, but it's so early in the game. I don't have a good answer for you, but that's kind of what I'm thinking. Somebody else raise their hand. Oh, maybe not. Okay. Well, good. Again, oh, did you have a question?
What, what's your thoughts on the change in the requirement that all the lots, I think you've got a meeting set up for the twenty-fourth
Yes.
Change in the minimum lot to build a house on a hundred square foot on the front.
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up. So one of the things that we're looking at doing is trying to cut down on the number of flag lots. I know this is probably gonna be somewhat controversial. But from a safety standpoint, if you, a flag lot is like, let's say you you build a house, you buy an acre in a, in a field, you build a house. And then the person that sold you that acre, he sells another acre. Not beside your house, behind your house. And there's like a twenty-five-foot easement, and maybe that easement is on your property. It's, and I've taught people that, I don't even know that. There's easement on your property to get back to their, their one-acre lot. And so you wake up one day and there's a house being built in what you think is your backyard. So that is what we're trying to cut out. And I don't think that there's anything that we can do to eliminate that completely. And we've had, I've talked to um some citizens and I've talked to commissioner hearing about this last week. The hundred lot minimum, the hundred later feet minimum probably will go away. That'll probably be reduced, I'm thinking. Uh I talked to a bar in the road bridge, we may go down to sixty feet, that's still, you know, up in the air. Uh to do that, we have to have a the word term is escaping me. We have to have essentially kind of a town hall meeting. Uh we're gonna do that uh for, either before the Thursday meeting or before the Monday meeting. I think it's before the Monday meeting. Uh anyway, so that will be an opportunity. If you're a builder, you're a Realtor, and you have input on that, please come to county commission uh and let your, you know, again, this only relates to what goes on in the county. So this doesn't have anything to do with the city of Dope or any other municipality. And there's some municipalities that follow our subdivision regulations, something one of them. So anyway, but I appreciate you you bringing that up. All right. Well, I guess that's it. It's twelve fifty-eight. But again, I'm greatly appreciative of the opportunity to serve and look forward to this. Thank you.
Well, when you're talking to those county employees about pension, I think those are highly underrated by people. You may not know this, but if you had retirement money and you wanted to buy your own pension, you could do that. And if a person came to my office and said, I would buy thirty thousand dollar a year pensions, and they're sixty-five years old, and they wanted to last their life and their spouse's life, that would cost five hundred thousand dollars to buy thirty thousand dollars a year income. You've got to write me a check, five hundred thousand dollars. To buy thirty thousand dollars a year income, boss, you got to write me a check, five hundred thousand dollars. And I just submit that that's a highly underrated benefit, that people don't realize how much that really costs. That's free. Stand with me, please, and let's do the four-way test. Of the things we think say for you.
Is the food, is the air of all concern, would it be a goodwill, better friendships? Would it be a beneficial, uh?